Baltimore. December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, five o'clock meeting. If you join me in prayer and pledge.
Let's kind of gracious heavenly fathers, we come to you tonight. We just thank you for your blessings, your mercy and your grace, Father. We ask that you'll lead us as we go through this meeting tonight to make the right decisions to benefit the citizens that we represent, Father. We ask you it will be with all of our employees, Father. We ask that you'll bless the season that we're in, Father, and guide us throughout the rest of this year. Bless all the families that's represented here, Father. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everybody. It's good to see so many people in the audience to be a part of the meeting tonight. Roll call, Patrick, Pete, Donald, Mikey, Tim, Angie and Bernie. Okay, we have a full quorum tonight. Is there any public comments?
Thank you, sir.
Um, one, Buddy Ray.
Buddy Ray, is it pertaining to the, pertaining to the?
Item X one.
X one, okay. Buddy Ray.
Two minutes.
All right, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Board, for allowing me to speak. My interest tonight is in topic eleven, new business line item, activation packets. I'd ask when it's appropriate, when this item is taken up, would you explain what that means and if you could address some of those that's in there, we'd appreciate it. The next question I have is, when would those packets be available or if they're now available to the public? If they're not available now, when will they be and where can we pick that up?
All right, those packets, Mr. Ray, will be in the, in the minutes once they are approved and that will be at the, following the next board meeting. They'll be available to be able to be online. No, the next board meeting. And we, and we, and let me say this, I hope to give more explanation when we get to those items. I'll have our engineer talk, talk more about specifics about those topics there. All right, anybody else?
Yes, sir.
That was it. Okay, thank you, Mr. Ray. Announcements, presentations, proclamation, I have two, but first I want to welcome troop two oh five in the back row. If y'all stand up, gentlemen. These are our troop that is over here on Railroad Street and they're here for government to see the city's activities and the way the government works and operates tonight. So, welcome, we're glad to have you. We hope you take away with some knowledge about what we do here. So, bear with us as we go through it. There's a lot of procedural stuff, but we thank y'all for being here. All right, next I have a special recognition here. I'm gonna come down here. All right, Sheldon Jones, will you come up here, hon?
Yes.
Right here with me, front and center.
Hey, back.
Right where? Sheldon has been a longtime volunteer here in our city and she's been involved with Main Street. She's the creator, innovator, Sea Santa Celebration, has been responsible for our lighting, layout, display for Christmas at Town Green. Just so much she's involved in and Sheldon, just on behalf of the, of the Board and the citizens, thank you for your volunteerism. And, and don't think this is the last time we're gonna call on you to do things, but I just wanted to take the time to recognize you. Recognition Sheldon Jones, the City of Long Beach wishes to recognize Ms. Sheldon Jones for her dedicated service and commitment for the betterment of the City of Long Beach. As Chair of the Long Beach Community Development Association, for her eleven years of devoted service in producing, directing and maintaining the Sea Santa Celebration event. Sheldon has served the city well. She has spent many countless hours planning events, assisting in decorating the town green for Christmas, working to make the city well dressed for cruising the coast. And she is a liaison for the Farmer's Market located at Town Green and founder of the Sea Santa Celebration, which was the first along the coast. She is a worker and not a delegator. The City of Long Beach wishes Sheldon the best in any future endeavors and we are sincerely grateful for the time, efforts and dedication she has contributed to the city and we extend our deepest appreciation for a job well done. That's on behalf of the Mayor and Board of Citizens.
But I didn't do it by myself. Bob Paul, Recreation Department, the Board, lots of help, my sisters, other citizens, yeah, everybody. Thank you.
Sheldon, you, this is well deserved. I need to get a picture before you get off of here. All right, moving forward, amendments to the municipal docket, I have one. We have an invoice that we failed to place for Jesse Allen. I'd like to have a motion second to add it to the docket.
No move.
Motion is second to add this to the docket of claims. Any discussion? Here none, all is in favor, I?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all. Next, we have to approve the amendments of the Mayor and Board of Baltimore, December third, twenty twenty-four, regular and December twelfth, tenth, twenty twenty-four, work session. Motion is second for discussion and approval?
Motion.
Discussion. Here none, all is in favor, I?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Planning and Development Commission, December twelfth, twenty twenty-four, a motion is second for discussion and approval.
So, who?
Second.
Any discussion? Here none, all is in favor, I?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, approved docked of claims number one, two, one, seven, two, four, motion is second, discussion and approval.
No move.
Any discussion? Here none, all is in favor, I?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have unfinished business, zoning order is minutes, amendment. And I've spoken with, with our council here and had, they're not quite ready for it yet and they hope to have it for us at our next meeting, so I request that we just table this to the next meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second to table the next meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor, I?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, under new business, we have an amendment to Andecor LLC, Long Beach Improvements. This is to include other projects in what's their project managing and directing for us. Motion is second, discussion and approval?
So, who?
Discussion.
Discussion. Mr. Mayor, can, is there, is this typical with construction management, how we're changing the? I believe it's, it's per job now instead of like, for example, what we do with, with other projects where it's, the engineer is X amount an hour and, you know, each individual delegated person working on the job. Is that, is that, I guess?
It's the same.
I'm, I'm looking for a little clarity.
It's the same to each, each job. You know, we've got, right now, we've got three different phases at the harbor going on and they're managing three, three different sections of that. They're also manage, project managing the gateway, watching the funding, the, the engineering and all that on, that's a separate project there. Pretty much what this is taking into consideration the future projects that we're gonna have down at the harbor.
Okay, gotcha. But this would be, just from, from my mindset, this is anything going forward, what we have them under stays the same?
He's the same. Stays the same. This is for additional projects.
So, as we go and then would this also, cause I didn't see that, would this also include hurricane recovery or does that have to be bid at the time?
That, that will have to be bid at the time.
Okay.
We do all, all three unless, and correct me if I'm wrong, did we get a, a certain period when we did those and then some extension years on there?
With another year extension.
There are two years.
We got the preposition.
Okay, okay.
We got, we got that and it should be.
But then we, we rebid that each year, so that, that contract and this contract have nothing to do with each other.
I think we went ahead and did that so that the next board that come in would not have to worry about that during a season.
Sure, and that's, that's smart. I just, I was looking for clarity on how the.
Yeah.
Yeah, man, it's kind of a new thing.
Right.
And, and that's why I don't understand.
As a G C, but they would, you know, they have, they work directly for us.
They're ours.
So, they're, they're, you're really hired and like the management, the day to day, having the project manager on site, the engineering and stuff, most of that stuff's gonna be subbed to, you know.
I got you.
And they, and they.
They manage the subs, they do all that.
And it takes us out of that, it just adds another layer of protection for us that we've gotta have.
Especially during the, you know, using any kind of federal money.
Right, and we're using three different pots of federal money along with two different pots of, or three different pots of state money.
You answered my questions. Thank you.
All right, any more discussion? Here none, all is in favor, I?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Activation packets, M DOT, this is Cleveland and Klondike, widening Cleveland, Klondike and Pineville, Klondike and West Railroad Street and then Jeff Davis and Railroad. And what this is, is an activation through M DOT for all of these projects. David, can you elaborate any on this for us or will you?
Sure. Yeah, I think it's five projects. All of them are, or four of them are intersection improvement projects. One is a roadway improvement where we're gonna be widening Cleveland. This is just really, I think, the next step. And funding has been made available to the city through Gulf Regional Planning Commission and this is the next step where you kind of enter into an MOU between the city and M DOT to actually get that project moving.
Okay, and we're looking at probably a year before we have any activation of even beginning to look at, I won't say even bid, maybe do an engineering?
Well, I, it could be a little faster on the engineering, but yeah, you're, you're at least a year probably on the, on the project construction.
Right.
That's assuming you don't need any right of way, which I think we know we do need right of way on some of these.
Right, and over here, we've already looked at some design on, on railroad at Jeff Davis. You've looked at design and we'll be working from our current southern right of way as it exists between Jeff Davis and the, the Pineville-Klondike intersection with railroad. It will be working to the north.
Yes, sir.
And then coming into the turn to go to Jeff Davis will remain the same.
That's right. We're, we're planning on doing some lane additions and that sort of thing to create some extra lanes there, but.
Right, but we won't be encroaching on anyone's property there.
That's right.
Or looking at anything there.
That's right.
And, Mr. Ray, is that, that clear y'all up there? Okay. You, you got it, okay. All right. Y'all have any, any discussion, any more discussion on this?
Are we taking them individually or are we doing them all at one time?
I would, I would like to do them all, all at one time.
Just one of them.
Yeah, and I just, I need, I'm gonna have to have a motion in seconds.
So, who? Second.
I got a motion, a couple of seconds there. Is any further discussion now? Here none, all is in favor, I?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have contract Artisan Power Technic Incorporated. This is for our fourth Ju- July fireworks show. Motion is second for.
Motion.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Mayor, if you look at the second paragraph on the contract, I believe that's a typo where it says the productions are scheduled to be performed on June twenty eighth. I don't think that's the correct date.
The correct date.
It's correct date.
So, we're having the event on the twenty eighth?
Yes, the Jubilee is always a Saturday before the fourth. This year, the Jubilee falls on June and the fourth is on a Friday. So, we're always a Saturday before the fourth.
Oh, I thought it was, I thought we were doing it that, and that's my fault, cause I, him and I were talking about it. I thought it was actually gonna be on.
July fourth.
The fourth, which is a Friday.
We really compete against a lot of people on July fourth, that's why.
No, I, I have no problem with it. Just reading it, that's why I was questioning. I don't have a problem with it.
Cause we had it the same way last year and it was a big success last year.
Oh, yeah. I don't, I don't disagree at all.
Okay.
For clarity, Courtney.
Pete, thank you. Any more discussion?
You okay, you okay with what we got?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Make sure.
Just, yeah.
I didn't wanna skip over anything here. All right, here no more discussion. All is in favor, I?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Cyber Security Grant Program Interest Survey Form. And motion is second to.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? I'll be, we'll be filling this out and sending any, this in requesting any type of.
This is for the State of Mississippi for assistance.
Right, assistance funding.
Yes.
For the cybersecurity. All right, no more discussion. All is in favor, I?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, I would like to enter into executive session, discuss a report, a report and course of action regarding security and plans, security plans and devices. Entertaining a motion second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, I?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And this may take about twenty minutes, I think, for us, for those of y'all here, but we have got to do this as it is in order here. I'm sorry, but we're gonna have to go ahead and do this, so we'll be back in about twenty minutes, hopefully.
Motion to second to come out of executive session. Got a motion to second, no action taken. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, the cyber proposal from AGJ Systems and Networks IT Support and Consulting. I'd entertain a motion to second to engage with AGJ for the IT management security and consulting. You got a motion and a second. We have any discussion here and now. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Next, we have appoint an election commission. We have to, Ms. Chelsea Brissellera-Huggett was on there. She has moved out of the city. We have to have somebody that lives in the city and to not let Ms. Sheldon Jones get too far from us. I asked her if she would consider serving as a volunteer as an election commission and commissioner, and she said she would. So I'd entertain a motion and a second to appoint Ms. Sheldon.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion here and now. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you Sheldon again for your continued service to the city. All right. Next, we have department business. Mayor's office, I have two things here or one thing really. I don't know if y'all got the opportunity to go over to the cemetery, but our Public Works Department has done a brilliant job over there. We had wheat reefs across America on Saturday morning, and everybody there was very appreciative of what we've done there, what the Public Works employees down there, they have worked tirelessly down there. The cemetery looked great. We got many wonderful comments. And I will say this, that Public Works uncovered a headstone that was almost completely covered up. It was an area where cars were turning the corner to go down one of the north-south roads that is in there. post and chain around that, and it was a grave of a veteran of the Spanish-American War. So a lot of respect, you know, to, to that, to that gentleman, to that grave, and we're going to keep a continued eye on that. But, you know, this, you know, Wendy from the American Legion, you know, the VFW, thank them for what they do there every year with this race across America. And I will say this, if you go over there and you stand when we got a little breeze blowing across cemetery and you see all the flags, there is a number of men and women who are buried in our, just our Long Beach Cemetery that are veterans of the armed services. And it, it, it makes you feel proud to walk across there and see that they have given us the opportunity to be here as we are tonight, to be able to, to have a free government. So just thank, Joe, make sure all your guys.
Thank you, sir.
Know that we, we greatly appreciate what they've done. All right. Moving forward, personnel, police department, we have one, we have one new hire, one transfer. Recreation, we have two new hires, and we're going to rescind one, another new hire. Saturday didn't want to show up for work. And then we've got library step increase one. I'll take all three of these. One, got a motion and second. Any discussion? Hear none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have city clerk revenue expense report for November of 2024. Motion second of discussion approval.
Motion second.
You got a motion, a couple seconds. Any discussion? Hear none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have an agreement with ESNS, the 2025 municipal election support. This is the same ones that's used across the state, and we've used for many, many years. I'd entertain a motion second for approval.
Come on.
A motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a resolution agreement with municipal party executive committee. This is pretty much bookkeeping.
Motion.
And got a motion and a second. Discussion? None. Being a resolution, we'll do a roll call. Patrick?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Angie?
And Bernie.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Next, fire department chief, chief scally, you have anything?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay. Police department chief seal?
No, sir.
Okay. Engineering, we have four items. The first one is Magnolia Run, off-site drainage improvements. Motion second for discussion and approval.
Motion.
We got a motion, a second discussion. David, you, you want to talk about this? I know we've got a, there's a couple of things in here, and I'd like to break these apart. There's one in here that we need to extend JLB's contract on minor construction.
Right.
And then there's a second part here that I'd like to take as part two, is the contract with JLB to do the actual work for the off-site drainage.
That's correct.
So first, I'd like to take the, make, amend that motion and second to talk just about the extension of the minor contract with JLB. Can I get, who made the motion?
Patrick.
Patrick, you made the motion. You amended to, to do just that one part.
Yep.
Okay. And the second was made by?
Angie.
Angie, you, okay. So we've got that amended motion. This is just to extend, extend the current contract for, for small construction projects. Do we have any more discussion? Hear none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the, entertain a motion, second discussion approval, JLB to move forward with the construction that we had talked about on the Magnolia Run there. Get a motion and second discussion?
Motion, second.
Got a motion and second discussion. And David, now you could talk about what we got here and we were, and where are we within the funds that we had designated to do this project?
Yeah, we, we've, you know, the, the engineer, the developers prepared a set of plans. We've reviewed that. Everything looks appropriate to us. JLB took those plans and prepared the attached estimate of their cost under the terms of that minor services contract. And, and I think that's what you guys, you know, you approved some additional funds, I think at the previous meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I think this is all in line with what's been approved. And so if y'all want to use the minor services contract, this is a way forward. If you, if you don't want to, we would have to procure the, the construction work in another way, like just a, you know, a normal bid process or something like that.
And we're within the funding that, I know we did make an adjustment to the last meeting to move forward.
Right.
We're within that funding source.
That's right.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hear none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have under engineering, casting point subdivision. It's ADA compliance. I know I'd given y'all all this, a copy of this letter, and it's included in the packet here. Casting point and the subdivisions that's, that, that have already been completed. I think we got one small section that hadn't been accepted. This was before we had, we were made aware in the subdivision ordinance, and we made it, before we made the change, that AD, ADA requirements for sidewalks had to be in, in with any subdivision moving forward. We've got a complaint here that, that's just, it's horrible for us to think about that we overlooked this. This is a way for us to move forward with correcting those. We're looking at approximately $65,000 to make these corrections. Am I correct, David, is what you've estimated? And in, in the packet we have tonight, you could see in a, in, I think it's on page six, no, five, the fifth page in, you could see where the connections are being made to be able to allow the, the handicap accessibility to move around completely within casting point.
Is this phase one or the current phase?
It's all phases, all phases.
All of it?
All of it.
This all of it is included?
Yeah, it's already been approved and accepted except for, David, we have one section out there that hadn't been accepted.
That's right. Phase six, which is the very northern part that connects.
Very northern end. So we will look at that and see.
There's one crossing in, am I looking at this incorrectly, but is there not one crossing that's in phase six?
Yeah. Is that the one that, that Crawford and Addison?
That's right.
Yeah. Okay. And that's included in here.
Mayor.
To go ahead and move forward that.
Mayor, just, just a point of observation, and, and I can't recall how long ago, but if you look at the, the, in the packet, it says that the complaint was received on April seventh of 2023.
Correct.
It's quite a, quite some time ago.
Yeah.
But we went out there, don't remember what year it was, but we made a special handicap accessible area to a guy's curb who was wheelchair bound that could get to the mailboxes.
And that was the complaint.
And we also, and we also made a ramp to the mailbox units over there to become ADA compliant. So, and Joe, do you remember, was, was that prior to 23 or?
That was.
That timeframe.
That was the 2023 complaint that they couldn't get up to get to the mailboxes.
So I'm just having trouble with this. So we, we, all of a sudden, we have five more sections that we have to comply with?
And all those were completed before we changed our subdivision ordinance to make sure that those. Now, the other subdivisions that we've built since then have those. You go to the south end of, of Mitchell Road that's there. You go on the other side of canal to the north end there, they have that. You, you go to Bear Point, they have all of them. You know, all of our new ones, we're making sure we do it. This slipped by on us, you know, without having an ordinance, and we had nothing to, to ground into. Yeah.
The developer.
Mr. Mayor, before, I know it's about, I think from what I read, it's about a $65,000 repair. I'd ask the board to consider allowing me to make contact with Ms. Bell, the civil rights specialist who contacted us about the complaint, and provide her the, the copies of the proposed improvements that we're talking about doing, to make sure that that will satisfy them enough before you, you spend $65,000. She comes back and says, that's not enough. We, we need to know. But I want to make sure before we do that, before the board authorizes that type of expenditure, that this will satisfy the, the Federal Highway Administration.
Yeah. And we've got a, a drop dead response date, 30 days from the receipt of this letter. So January the third.
December third.
December third, we receive it. Some like in January third or second, we'd have to have a response to them.
I, I feel confident it's going to satisfy them, but I, and maybe the board wants to consider approval of the expenditure, subject to her saying that that will rectify the violation.
Right there.
Because if they say this, these improvements that we've proposed don't, don't satisfy the violation or the, or the ADA requirement, then we've.
We come back and make another decision.
You got to spend more money on what we just did.
And I, and I think you're right there. You make that and let her know that we are acting on it moving forward. The board, you know, we could have it in the minutes where you could, you know, send her a copy of the minutes where we are moving forward. And I'd ask the board to go ahead.
Maybe David knows. Maybe David's faced this previously. I'm not sure.
I have not. I, I also noted that this is a year old or a year and a half old complaint. We know that we did the work out there. You know, I, I certainly would recommend that we contact Ms. Bell before we spend any money because the, the complaint may have been satisfied by the work we've already done.
That's my curiosity as well.
I can look up that work order. I know it's on the work order.
That sounds about the right time.
Well, you know, in the complaint here, they've named off all the intersections.
Yeah.
Yes.
Within.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Before, it was just the mailbox. So I would, I would like for us to take up the recommendation of our council and move forward that. Donald, you got?
Can I add one more thing before we have a motion? If we also notate that if we do have to use the money, we use what money we have out of our sidewalk funds, so it does not affect our general budget. And then we should be, the other question as far as funding this would be January the 15th, we should get income sales, I mean internet sales tax money for roads and all, and wondering if we can use that money towards this as well.
Right. And we'll need to make sure.
So this does not affect our.
General budget.
Our general budget.
Right.
And I would like to make another comment. I know, Mike, you've been doing a great job looking at our ordinances and, and trying to find some updates to them. And this could be one of those updates in a, in a follow-up for all the developers, that a checklist be made. And all of these things that are requirements go down that checklist with the developer and the engineering department and all before it's completed, so we don't run into this issue again.
This is our new subdivision ordinance now.
Yeah.
Did this come out with the new? There's an ordinance for that. There is an ordinance for handicap accessible sidewalks and subdivisions.
And I, I think what Angie is.
Just making sure.
Add a checklist that we know we have it.
Yes.
You know.
Yeah.
And engineering is doing that too, when they, when they review plans for a subdivision. So we got two checks there all, you know, and I agree, any, any more that we could put in the process to make sure this doesn't happen again. So, all right.
So I'm gonna need to. Make a motion that we allow our council to move forward with this, and if it satisfies the person or persons, we go ahead and allow the money.
We got a motion and second to allow council to, to move forward with reaching out to U.S. Department of Transportation and, and letting them know what we're doing and what we've allowed to do, and up to $65,000 if they're in agreement with us moving forward with these corrections.
That's correct.
All right. We got that motion and second. We have any more discussion? Hear none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have amendment. This is to the Overstreet Association Pier Repairs, Phase One. This is the, the pier six was the south of Steve's Marina Transit Pier, the Launch Piers and the West Fishing Pier. I think this was a subsection of what we had asked for a week or a meter or two ago to move forward. We're starting on those that we can get funding for.
That's right.
Motion.
Motion and second discussion. Hear none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have contract Overstreet and Associates tenants and, tenants and pickleball courts. Motion second for discussion.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion.
So David, just, and I'm just asking the question, we, this was the same price when we was doing the four courts that were two, and this is the same price we had. Am I correct?
I, it is. I thought that's what we decided was to design both and bid one, and bid one, and have the capability to bid the second if the money falls where it needs to.
So this design right here is going to work for four tennis courts. Only, only thing that this is contracted state in two courts. We're not going to have to have any more engineering past, you know, design, no more design.
Correct.
Inspections and making sure that we're, the, the geo is there to be able to, the compaction of the saw.
Correct.
And removing that to make sure that, that would be the other side of the coin. It would be charged for two additional.
That's right. If, if the money doesn't work to build all four, it would be nothing really to bid in, in a later time when you have funds come available to bid the additional two.
Okay.
I thought, I thought sure he was gonna say Merry Christmas. We ain't gonna charge y'all a thing.
Where's Jason at?
Merry Christmas?
Yeah. Oh, okay. We've got a motion and second to, to, to move forward with this contract.
Instead of doing two, paying to do two at once, wouldn't you do four? If it works, you go with it?
If, if the numbers are right.
You save the money and don't.
We talked about in a work session, we're, he's gonna design four courts.
Yeah.
But when we go out to bid, we're gonna bid out two.
Two with a.
With the option of.
With a denim.
To get the numbers for.
An alternate. We'll have an alternate for two more.
Yeah.
Yeah. That was a work session.
I think they're saying the same thing.
Yeah, okay. Gotcha. Makes sense. Makes sense.
I was trying to follow as well. Yes, sir.
All right. Any more discussion? Hear none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Joe, do you have anything from Public Works?
No, sir. Not at this time.
Be sure and thank you guys for the job they've done.
We do. Thank you.
They've done a wonderful job over there. Bob at Recreation?
I'm gonna give you an update on our, phase two of our playgrounds. All of our equipment is in. We, I've spoken with H2O, and they would like to install everything on the first of the year, get through the Christmas holidays, let them catch up on some of their stuff. And everything will be installed hopefully the first or second week in January.
Okay.
Good.
Very good. Very good. That's a lot of improvements going into our parks. And I've had some comments about it already.
Good.
And it's, it's good about the, the users. Mike Gunlock Building Office.
Everything's good. Go ahead.
The, the War Memorial Construction of the bathrooms and the pavilion. Can you give us an update on where we're at with that?
Hosted start earlier this week, from what he told me, but I have not seen him. I don't know if the weather messed him up at the end of last week, but I will check with him and I'll email all y'all tomorrow. I'll get with him in the morning.
All right. Yeah. Give us a follow-up on that. Anything else you got?
No, sir.
Okay. Municipal Court, Ms. Emma, you got anything? Okay. Harbor, Harry, you have anything?
We're good, sir.
Okay. Portney Community Affairs, you good? We have no der, derelict properties. Mr. Simpson, you have anything from the city attorney's point of view?
No, sir.
Okay. This is the last one till next year? Wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Yes.
And a Happy New Year, and stay safe. Motion second adjourned.
Motion.
Second. You got a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Adjourned.